Was that Rosemary?
Okay. Call a meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, being held in the Town House Auditorium, February 26th, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
President of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone, we're recording the meeting, is anyone recording the meeting other than us?
Dalton is, but he is telling us this is his last meeting.
Really?
Yeah.
This is your last meeting, Dalton? Unmute, Dalton.
Yep, this is my last meeting. I've accepted a job as a digital content producer for Fox 61 in Connecticut, so I'm gonna start that next week. So, I might be back as a correspondent, though. I might still cover you guys, so we'll see what happens.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Minutes?
Yep. Two seconds.
Give me a second. National grid petitions for place the underground conduit at the corner of Summers Road and Allen Street. Oh, you put it in the gaming commission's discussion on mitigation money, cable license renewal.
On the school condition thing, tie him bond, see what's happening. Ivan is out on medical for a while, Craig is following up on at this point. Craig French.
Fire Department generator. They approve that.
Motion to approve, January 2nd, minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
January 29th, 2024. The update on the municipal vulnerability project. And the town administrator decision. Water Commission report. Some repairs at Green Meadows. Use of the building.
More approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item on our agenda is a hearing for a new alcoholic beverage license at Five Allen Street. I'll open the hearing. We have the application here, just to verify, we've notified the abutters, I have the certified copies of the abutters notice. We have a copy of the advertisement in the newspaper saying that we're holding the hearing. We have the abutters list here. The planning board has approved the site. On January 10th, the planning board voted to approve the site. And let's see, we have the application here, we have the $200 fee has been submitted to the Alcohol Beer Control Commission. We have the new retail application, manager application, the core reauthorization, the proof of citizenship, the supporting financial records, the abutters notification, the advertisement, the floor plan, the copy of the legal right to occupy, lease or deed, and the management That said, I will have the applicant or his representative come forward, kind of up here and...
No, he had to pay that.
My name is Dan Kelly, I'm the attorney for the petitioner. To my left is Michael White, and beyond him is Mr. Robert Gosman, they are the proposed owners. Start with Mr. White, he's a retired correctionals officer from the state of Connecticut. Now, he's in his retirement, he's looking to do something else, not just be retired all day. This is, he's been lifelong friends of Mr. Gosman, and this is what he's gonna do now with his retirement. Mr. Gosman will be the proposed majority owner and also the proposed manager, has owned other bars in other jurisdictions, he's been manager of other bars in other jurisdictions, and has had a clean record with both the local and with the ABCC. They're both certified, as is every single person who works there, that'll be a condition of employment. I know he gave you a little bit of a presentation last time he was here, but I'll just kinda just give it a short version. You have the business plan in front of you, so you know that he's looking to do. It's a small space to begin with, approximately 2,500 square feet or so. Then when you back out the kitchen and the bathrooms, there's not a, the occupancy rate big will be pretty low. We know the town officially stepped down, but it's based on a number of different factors, but it's gonna be fairly tight in there to begin with, which is what they want. They don't want a big spot. Focus will be on food and infusion type drinks, kind of a different type of feel, kind of a casual area, they'll do those types of smoke drinks where you can make a drink, but it smokes, different type of cocktails like that. Yeah, have you seen those?
I haven't.
You guys see that on barbers?
Shot in the beer guy.
They'll have those too.
They'll have those for you, but then mostly they'll be focused on some other spots, some other types of things. The proposed menu is there as well, be a chance to look at that, but the focus will be on food. Mr. Gosman, wherever he's been, has had a kitchen at his disposal and has had great reviews from all the customers. He'll be looking to be open, they'll be generally closed Mondays and Tuesdays. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday will be four to 12. Sunday, he wants to do kind of a brunch from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. When you go there, certainly every single minute they'll be open, you'll see these, these gentlemen there. Mr. Gosman is a hands-on operator, they don't expect to have more than a handful of people working for them anyway. They'll be the kind of, Mr. Gosman will be the head employee there and in charge of everyone, and he's been managing, he's managed several bars for the last, you know, 15 or 16 years. This has been his vocation. That's all he's done, and this will be his full-time work.
Are you planning to have any entertainment there?
Thank you. I should have brought that up. The only entertainment they'll have there will be some background music, you know, that might play over, that you could, you could listen to while you were eating, maybe perhaps, you know, a single person, maybe if it's St. Patrick's Day or something like that, just something light. It's gonna be, it's kind of a small place, anything loud would not be receptive to people eating dinner.
Would come back for entertainment license?
Yeah, we didn't apply for that on purpose, we wanted to get in this first and then see how that goes, and then come back and apply for the entertainment licenses in the next couple of weeks, months.
Do they still make jukeboxes, Don? I'm not sure.
If it's called an iPhone.
Yeah, no jukebox.
You can still get them where they sell pinball machines. What about, what about the parking? I mean, that lot seems to always be full anyhow.
Well, that's, it is, but we met the planning board's requirements for the space, but since the new owners of the plaza, they added all that parking in the back, which is actually pretty close to us, so it's, you know, on the side, in the back by...
Is that lighted back there?
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry, what were your names again?
Robert Gosman.
Robert.
Michael White.
So, you presented them as always, somebody's gonna be on premise running, you both are gonna co-own the place, co-manage?
Co-owner, Mr. Gosman will be the manager, he'll be there every minute. Mr. White is retired, you know, he'll be in and out a lot of the time, so you'll probably see him most of the time, but Mr. Gosman, every minute they're open, you'll see him there.
Is the name on the license?
Yeah, mine's, exactly.
Have you gone around to the other businesses, establishments, just to introduce yourself, say this is what our plan is and, you know, kinda?
No, but the landlord did, CJ.
CJ did?
Yep.
I have one issue. You owe us $37.50 for your dog fight. Take a check tonight, if you got it.
Okay.
Give this to your attorney.
Make sure that gets paid properly.
Is there, you have anything else?
No.
Any other questions?
Not tomorrow.
Is there anyone here, abutters or anyone in opposition? Anyone on Zoom in opposition, or have, want to have anything to say? Okay, see, another entertaining motion.
What is the establishment gonna be labeled? Are we issuing the license under the establishment name or owner's name?
The establishment.
Establishment name, and the establishment, do you have a name picked?
Yeah, the Black Sheep.
The Black Sheep?
Yep.
Explain to me the fusion thing again.
It's all about the smoking drinks.
Oh, I mean...
It'll watch far better.
More natural.
It's just for flavor, and more or less for show. Yeah.
Was there anything during the planning board hearings that needed to be addressed that you were supposed to work on, correct? Change your business plan at all, or anything like that?
Nothing.
Met the required requirements, flying call?
It was just the health department, they wanted a bunch of certificates, which I already have.
Sure.
And Gary Weiner checked the septic system.
Were they ever overloaded?
Yep, that's all been approved, I gave the letters.
Yep, I have them all here, yeah.
I will say, I agree with Don there, but I have a concern about the parking, and I know what you're saying, you're doing the math, and there are the extra spaces out back.
Yep.
I don't think they're that convenient to it, like Don said, we go by it on weekends, and it seems to be pretty full. You're replacing a restaurant that was there that was primarily a takeout establishment with a sit-down thing. So, it might be something that, I'm sure the math worked out, I'm just not sure the convenience works out with transitioning across the front of the mini-mall and up behind the Dunkin' Donuts, the parking in back. Perhaps that's something that the owner of the mini-mall might say, look, we need more employees to park in back, we'll do better lighting so that the customers can stay in front, perhaps.
Yeah, that's internally, like, I'd make sure that the employees are parking...
Right.
In the back, yeah.
It might not be that safe.
Yeah, I'd rather have...
Walking through the drive-thru, you know, to get...
I'd rather have a customer out front and then leave them back, you know.
I would see, we issue a liquor license to the Black Sheep establishment at the Allen Street location, subject to town rules, bylaws, and...
$37.50.
ABC regulations.
Certification from the ABC.
Yeah, we have to send the ABC, no, the next step, you know this, right, goes to the ABCC, then they investigation, and then it comes back to us, so we have to issue within a certain amount of time, seven days, I think it is.
Yeah, you have to sign it.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Good luck, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Dan?
You want me to take cash?
No, we can't take cash.
Not on camera.
Not on camera, no. The next item on our agenda is the budget review of the police department. Presentation, isn't it? It's only a three-hour presentation. All right, what do we got?
Good evening. I believe you have it in front of you.
I do.
So, what we have is, starting off with cheap salary, no increase currently, there's a negotiations going on. General salaries have gone up from, obviously, last year, you can see a little bit because due to the step raise that's included, and then also the IT, which is in a contract language for the percentages there. Career incentive has gone up because of our newest hires, Quinnville, against the neutral Quinnville. Elections, the town management meetings, the state election this year for us to have coverage. Towel clerk, there is a zero across the board. Training stays the same as asked by the advisory. Cruiser maintenance stays the same. We added a new cruiser in the line, which is $70,000. Either we go with an SUV or the F-150 pickup, which was been asked of by the men, with dental research around the area. The F-150 pickup would be good for us, if we were to get rid of the SUV. Usually, we go to firearms, or if we have any type of situation in town, you can bring different detour signs, bear, something like that with the back there. If we go to another SUV that's gonna be smaller than the Tahoe, we don't really have the space in the back for what we'd like to utilize. The pricing is very close, it's at 70. The outfitting, and then for the cruisers itself, is about $2,000, $3,000 difference in the cruiser. It's about one fifty SUV. The outfitting is, makes a difference, it'd be around 70 there.
Before you go on, just a quick question about the SUV versus the F-150. Would that be just a one-time F-150, or will you be looking to replace all the cruisers with F-150s down the road?
Just a one-time.
Just a one-time.
And due to the fact, like I said, because it's a utility vehicle for us, the smaller vehicles, you know, we go up to months and we load into targets and all of our firing stuff, and then I would also look to possibly have that vehicle utilized by just supervisors also.
Yeah, it's not, is it a crew cab thing, where you would have the backs, if you need to have a prisoner, you would have the back section docked?
Correct. It'd be, it'd be a...
Enclosure?
Enclosure in the back there, yes. We would go down next to equipment. We boosted and are asking for new block nine millimeters for our department. That comes to us around a $20,000 fee. They'd be taking the trade in of our 45s that we currently have. And building maintenance and move through, there's a couple of different expenses that we had added in there, one for phone support, and then there was another one that we had in there, we had some meetings and dues that have gone up, and a couple of things have gone up. The wind wack has gone up with 10%, 375 from $300, and general expenses have gone up.
That seems a pretty huge increase. What's the big increase for general expenses?
So, we've got our, come back to our back end here. So, that boosts is the SBA infrastructure, so technically, it's the 28 that they went up on the 23, so the SBA is included in that, I know it's a different line item, but we have included it into that, the general expenses. And that's what we did also last year. So, that's on our communications page, our back, the SBA infrastructure, $2,384 for 12 months, policing of the towers.
There's the towers?
Village Drive.
Once that in? What page is this?
It's nowhere near the communications.
Maintenance.
General, you go to the general expenses after the general expenses, and you come into the communications.
I've been looking for it. Building expenses?
Five, six from the net, is it?
I got it quick, man.
28, six only.
What? I don't have that. You have a sheet called communications?
No, I don't have a sheet, no. Got building and maintenance, and that was the last one.
Yeah, I don't have communications.
But that would have been the increase in the...
So, it's just the tower lease has gone up?
Yeah, that's it.
Is there a reason for the tower lease going up?
Correct.
For the contract?
Yeah.
It's contractual?
$20,000? That's based on 20 grand? It's based on, yes, so technically, it's like 3% to increase, it went up 12 months.
Please now.
21.
21 wouldn't be $20,000.
No, no, I'm saying 2,100, I'm saying.
So, it went from 2,100 to 20,000?
20, no, 2,100 to 2,300 times 12, guess there's sort of 28,000.
Oh, a month, gotcha.
It's monthly, yeah, the monthly fees.
Hold on, it went up from how much a month to how much a month? So, this league, okay, it's a total of 28,000. We didn't pay the 28 before?
Yeah, yeah, well, no, 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 that's, that's our increase right there, that's why it's...
No, I see the, it's 28 times 12 months. What do we pay this?
This year?
How much per month?
I don't have...
Because, I mean, I see that number, but it must have come from something up to 28.
Yeah, it did, I believe it was the 21, I'm thinking it's what I was saying, the 2,100.
Okay, so that went up 200 times 12. Yeah, I'm just looking at, no, I'm looking at general expenses, I'm talking about going from 91 to 20.
Right, that's...
So, then you add that 20, so now, for purposes of the line item that we added into that line there for the general expenses, but that comes actually under police communications, but it's in, so our police communications separates that 28,000 from the general expenses, but it's all included in our budget for the general expenses. See what I'm saying? In our green sheet that comes down, comes across, we separate the...
So, was it a separate line before?
Yes.
That's our question.
Yes, that's the separate line before, right. So, last it was 27, it was 27.
As a separate one.
In our police budget, we put it in the same line under general expenses.
So, now you moved this 27 into our...
That's why, that's why.
That makes more sense, I think.
But that's what we've always done.
No, it's...
But if we always done it, then how was there a $30,000 increase?
Right, it couldn't have been done that way before. It was a separate line.
Separate line before.
So, is that what we wanted to do? That's the question.
Well, because it's police and fire communication, right?
Right, that's for the tower, for the fire and police.
That's my point, I mean, it was separate before because it was our public safety as opposed to...
Yeah, we wanna keep it separate.
Right, yeah.
That's probably where we're gonna have to put this 62.5 for dispatch.
Well, I'm kinda wondering why the dispatch number isn't in here.
Because we don't know where to put it.
Thank you.
Did you put it?
We don't have a line separate.
We did have a line before, dispatch salary means.
This is our first.
I think it was probably, it was probably '03.
Yeah.
It's our thing now, right.
We had a whole budget category for dispatch, and then various expenses under that, which is eliminated.
Want to make it a separate thing in public safety because it's...
Yeah.
And who's bringing that number 4? Bringing that number 4?
Okay, probably.
So, I would back the 28 then out of that.
Yeah, back the 28 out of that, and then we'll put it under, we'll put it under fire and police communication, we'll add the dispatch and then...
Same way it was, and it went up.
Yeah.
Roughly 50%.
Makes sense.
Couple hundred bucks together. Increase the rental fee and their tower at the dump.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's how it works, right?
Exactly.
Is the, is the dog officer's car included in your maintenance?
Is it? What?
The dog officer, does she have a...
She has a cruiser, but that falls in between, I mean, I've been doing inspections for her, been doing regular maintenance for having my maintenance budget, but she doesn't really have a location for that particular car, so I wasn't sure where we would put that.
So, I ask you, is that part of your cruiser maintenance now?
No, that's not part of this, no, but I added the cruiser maintenance that I have here now, I have done, helps her, but her car doesn't fall under my contingent.
I was being paid for now.
I mean, but...
On the cruiser maintenance.
Why is it not under your maintenance?
Don't know. Never, I mean, she falls, her activities are gonna fall under me.
Right.
But her budget doesn't reflect anything for cruiser maintenance or anything, so I just assumed to pay for any issues that she has.
Be able to cover it?
I have been able to, but hasn't been...
It's a good assumption.
Thank you.
All right. How much you spend on overtime a year?
Hover around maybe 100,000.
Is there some way we can corral that?
So, we currently have in place a cap, which is through the contract, which does assist us in corralling it. It's five shifts currently, eight hours, which is a 40-hour first rate of refusal. If we can maintain that, I still am a believer that our reserve force has not depleted, maybe down the road, we might start to lose more after 2027, we get a full certification of all the reserves that are out there, they've bridged, and now they can continue working. But I've actually, over the last several months, have had three, four applications come of officers, reserve officers looking to work. So, to answer your question, I think if we keep keeping a cap in place on our budget that we do and utilize our reserves when we can, it's going to help in a great deal.
Back to your cruiser maintenance, and I don't mean to nickel and dime it, but what is golf?
Golf is the oil blue filter, is G, that's, comes from...
But looking at the different price, your, one of your newer cars, one of your newer cars is 625 and all the rest of them are 300, why would that be high?
So, go back to the question.
So, the Tahoe at the bottom of 2021?
Right.
Is like double the price of the other ones, why is...
It's a bigger vehicle, so it's a Chevy Tahoe, which is more...
So's the one above it, so's the one, car two.
Not being utilized as much, though. So, the newest car that we had, which was the 625, when we first got that, we didn't have to do all that major maintenance, the other ones we had to do more maintenance to it. Those are floating figures, really.
We have two 19 Tahos that are 375, the newer Tahoe is 625, is it because it's newer?
It's newer, and it costs more to change the oil, and the tires are bigger, and...
Well, that's why, that's the tire expenses there, nickel and dime, it just seems over the place.
Well, you know, and that numbers are, through our maintenance, is a floating number, so one cruiser may be a little bit less, and then a newer cruiser, so to make the numbers work up, what we most recent had for most expenses, is why you're seeing that.
Let's just start with the defibrillators.
Defibrillators are all in, the new defibrillators are in, and they've been put into the cruisers, the fire department has theirs. We were assessed an initial fee for child infant pads, and that fee needs to be back out. We will get a full invoice for the amount that we spent on the defibrillators, I think it was 23,004 at the special town meeting. Once they get our old defibs, check all the serial numbers, they'll send us out an invoice. Oh, we did receive one.
So, you received it, it's a news.
Yes.
Were you able to cut that lawn maintenance budget?
So, we are going to have to look at that, depending on what happens as we move forward after June, I still have to meet with Gary, and we had talked about sprinklers and all that, so...
I'm, what do you mean, meet with Gary?
Well, you mentioned if I would meet with him and talk to him, is there anything we can do to continue or not continue?
Well, you can't continue, you need well, I don't think it drove no well, you need to cut that line to the senior center for the sprinklers. That's an absolute, the DEP has given us an order.
Okay.
And it was pretty clear, I think, before, the information on that, they weren't, it wasn't a, hey, would you, it was do it by this date. And we sent you the letter, so we were in compliance with that order. And then it will be discontinued, we told them, by May 1st.
I didn't, okay.
It was in the letter.
Okay.
So, then after that, we talked about the potential that there is another well on site, perhaps that could be connected to provide sprinkling, you know, but there's not really a lot of give on the other side.
So, these...
If they wanted our opinion, they would have asked for it. Don, DEP, if they wanted our opinion, they would have asked for it. No, they didn't.
Did, maybe you just made chain of thought, oh, how's your free item show?
So, it's, it's holding currently because they were able to find the issue, we need a new unit replaced, there's actually seven units up above in the ceiling to heat our police department, one that has to be replaced, but to find that fleet, we have a good amount of expense that we have to pay, and then to pay for the unit itself. So, we are at, we have heat currently, and we are going to move forward to get the new unit put in place, and the heating and air conditioning will continue to work as it has in the past.
And you can observe that in this year's budget, you think?
I'm hoping.
That's the 15,000 you sent over today.
Yes.
Now, it's been suggested by some that you eliminate the court position, is that a viable option to save money?
I don't believe so. Clerk's there Monday through Friday, every alternating Sunday, alternating Saturdays, works eight to two, is our record, record access officer, as we have a records access officer for the town, he is our clerk that does that for the police department, does our reports, does our firearms license to carry, applications, and meets with the individual... individuals, along with myself, and is a face to hand the police department, try to agree that I think by losing dispatch, just not having somebody there, they at least still have someone there, it's been mentioned that people are still very interested in seeing a face there, not having a dark station right around the clock.
Now, your figures, all your figures here for salaries, they don't include, I mean, we're in the process of negotiating with the union now, so that doesn't include any kind of.
Correct.
Or anything there, or any of the other.
So this budget that we have before us.
Things that they're asking for.
This budget that we have before us is none, is, is straight up with no, no call increases.
So the 13,000, the general salaries was due to something different, or?
So we have a step raise, the step raises that come into a couple of the officers along with a percentage of a contract, which is a 5% that we have through the IT, so it's contractual along with the step raises.
For next year's budget?
Coming, so, so the way it affects it is, we, middle of this year, we have step raises that come in every, so, so yes, we have a step raise that comes into play for the officers, new, new officers that were hired, so that affects the next budget coming in.
So backing out the, the.
Fire.
Police radio thing, the budget really went up about 120,000, about 8%. Salary at this point.
Right.
And that's not including bringing dispatch back in.
Right.
Now, I realize quite a bit of that, obviously, the majority of it is the cruiser, which was left out of last year's budget.
Yeah.
So if it had been consistently in there, we wouldn't see it's such a big jump.
And the reason why it wasn't consistently in there is because we went ahead and changed the rotation, but you're, but you're probably, you're right, we wouldn't see that major.
So we wouldn't see that because it would, the reason we left it in there all the time is to keep it even.
And so we did, usually we went with the cruiser every other year.
Within the special town meeting, we did every other year. We kept the cruiser in the standard budget, and every other year, we'd pick up the odd one, right. Then we went every three year because the warranty was getting much better, so by leaving it out, this, this is unfortunate what happens, 70 grand for.
Oh, definitely, we missed out on two years of, technically, two years of cruiser, right? And then the other increase would be the, the fireworks.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have to see how the negotiations go.
Yeah.
Yeah. Question, chief, the proposed, proposal under discussion to create a lieutenant is not reflected here in this budget?
No.
How would that be handled?
Um, great question.
With further discussion.
With further discussion, it's even better, sir, thank you.
All right, anything else on the budget?
No.
Thank you, chief. What are you doing with the advisory?
March 11th.
It's a great day.
So this is you again.
I'm up again.
CMP MEMA.
That's why I brought all these folders. So, uh, some plan's been being worked on, we've had a few meetings over the year, Craig 's been very influential in, in reviewing and having, I think, my back on, on reviewing what's going, been going through, Bob's been there, I, I sent it out a couple times for review of the board, I'm hoping that we all reviewed it and believe the change of, of that document to be.
She was not meeting.
Last changes we did is, we took Bob out of there as a town administrator, put a new one in there, and we're just waiting for a signing, signing of.
It's got to do with that noise.
The, the, let me go back here, let me go to my, we said something.
Yeah, so, so actually, under another review, I noticed there was some spelling issues and some date issues on, on when, when that input was put in.
The data points were a suggestion pretty much from Scott Fleba from MEMA, you know, going through infrastructure, different things, to kind of have everything labeled and listed, phone numbers, addresses.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at town buildings, and I don't see the schools.
I see Provost there, and I also don't see Becky's name, and we talked about adding that back at the beginning.
Yeah, they were special categories, and they fell in a different category, and the recommendation from MEMA was to keep them in their other special categories and not of this building. I think that's how we worded it, because he said typically they would keep any of those buildings in a separate category.
Right.
And I, I didn't quite understand.
There was multiple tabs that came into data points, I'm hoping that they all forwarded to you most recently that changed, but previously, Craig and we, when I had sent them out, I think you had had no problem getting into seeing them all and looking at them. It shows the different buildings, and it shows hazardous issues, medical facility.
Yeah, this one looks a little different than what I remember.
I don't, guess I don't understand that point then.
Or public.
If it's this building only, then why is the fire chief and the highway inspector, highway superintendent in it, unless, I thought this was a town-wide emergency management plan.
Town library, council on aging, town library.
Right.
It's here.
So why isn't her name up on the thing? She's always been on the, in the list there for signing off on the signature page. You're part of the emergency management group?
What are you asking? I don't know.
I'm looking at the signature page, and I'm trying to figure out.
I don't see a signature page, where is that?
Oh, I'm looking in the final review document in the, is it a different thing in the laser fish?
Under today's agenda?
It says mass, him and mass, C E M P, final review, 22124.
22.
There we go.
22124. Yeah, I know, the 1.1, so is this not the current one? It's what's in the fish now.
Yeah, there's attachments, yeah.
Yeah, it's the current.
Yeah.
Where, where are you looking at a signature page in the front?
And if you update it, there's Brian's name, it's the updated one.
Chair, town administrator, emergency management director. And what are you asking, John?
I'm asking the, the signature page, I'm like trying to figure out why Becky's not there, we have Eva on there.
Because as, as being, in being in charge of the town records and all that, Becky's in charge of the senior center, but it's a town building that's in charge by the board of selectmen. Becky's not the one other, Eva's in charge of all of our records and all that for the town, so that's why she would be there, not the town treasurer, she would be the town clerk, town clerk. But there's, there's no need to put Becky's name in there as being the director. She's in charge of her billing per se, I get what you're saying, but her billing is used as a shelter by me as the emergency management director, I take over for technically her, I'm not sure why we would put her in.
I mean, I guess we can go back.
We've had an emergency management group for a while.
But this isn't, this isn't for the group, this is, this is a.
A community-wide emergency management system to ensure coordinated response to emergencies, and we're not going to let the emergency.
Which is done by me as emergency management director.
And we're talking records, which I'm not quite sure what happens and why this is part of the emergency, and we have Dick and Eva signing off on it.
If you want to add, I'll, we can, it's our document, we can add anything you want, if that's, if that's the board that wants to do it, then we, then we add her, add her in there, I mean, we're just not sure what particularly jobs she'll have there, but we can, we can add her in there.
Under, under the town buildings, okay, we got, maybe, we got town hall, highway department, historical commission, town library, council on aging, town library, but we don't have the two schools and the police department or the fire department.
We actually have shelters in the.
The shelters.
Right, and the schools used to be as part of shelter, yeah.
So if you go through the document itself, it does show the police departments being the E O C, the central, central area of the operations, and it shows the shelters of the schools and all that, there's not just one location where Eva's going to be slighted, so.
Yeah, so I'm, so I'm looking at this data points thing that you sent, so that's why I was wondering, is that, was added, or?
Yeah, this was the one that Scott Fleba had sent, and I had the same question too, well, how come we don't have everything listed under town buildings? He's like, well, it's because it's listed under education or schools, or I don't remember the specific category offhand, but it was already accounted for in another tab.
Okay.
That was his reasoning behind that.
He's not on.
I'm also saying.
Okay, I see, under public safety infrastructure, you have the fire department, the police station.
So as you go, I don't want to beat the dead horse here, but I see the shelter list, senior center, three medals, Baron Burgess of O'Gorman Spelrock. You have the overarching person in charge of the emergency.
Yes.
Who's obviously not going to be running the shelter, so that person should be in the list. I don't see why we deviated from what we've had going the last three or four years, and you've been integral in keeping the emergency management group together, and keeping that group as part of the list here. Maybe what you're saying is that this goes into a different facet of it with the documents as well, but I don't see why the exclusion goes there. I know what you're saying, it's a living document, if changes need to be made, we bring them up and make them.
In Scott's defense, I mean, he has sent this to us for the last six months multiple times, so.
Yes, I have.
So what do we need to do with this? What are we doing with this?
I'll, I'll go back and correct it, Mr. Chairman, and I'll get it back to you again.
Do we need to sign off on it and vote for it?
I think, I think it'd be a good time to sign off on it with what we have, sure, and then some corrections I can get back to with the corrections, yes, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I think we're good right now.
Any other questions?
Like to, again, suggest some amendments and bring the chief back so we can finalize it, yeah, I agree.
All right.
I'd like to hear from the people that are on that list, that they're good with the C E M P plan, we've got nine town officials listed there, are they all good with this too?
I have sent the plan out, and I've asked.
Maybe they read it as well as we do.
It's apparent.
I've sent it out, I've asked for review, and then I've got the meeting to bring forward for the signage, so I would hope every time I sent it out, I was going to get the review, and apparently I haven't, so.
I've sent you suggestions.
Yeah.
All right, keep at it.
Right on.
Thank you, Scott.
Hang around, hang around for the end.
Yeah. Ah, I think, I, I don't know, maybe.
All right, board of registrar's appointment, Joanne Opitz, Joanne here, oh, there she is.
I like the sweater already.
Oh, so comfortable.
Hi, Joanne.
Hi.
So you want to be a registrar of voters?
Yes.
Yeah.
In your current affiliation.
Unenrolled.
Unenrolled. And, and she's got the, the town clerk that endorsed her, suggested we appoint her. And we need, we need someone, well, here we are.
This would satisfy our requirements, right?
This would satisfy our requirement.
Right?
That's it?
No.
Well, no, we do need a vote, but it's a great board, my grandmother was actually chairman of the board back in the, no, so.
I'll move to appoint Joanne Opitz.
What are you looking at?
To our board of registrars.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Sorry to put you through.
Thank you for hanging around, thank you for hanging around.
The quizzing, the quizzing was pretty hard, I know.
You gotta be sworn in, yeah, so, all right, good, thanks, Stuart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Fiber optic committee.
Sorry, sorry. I'm sorry, we had a good feeling.
Nice.
Crazy.
Fiber optic.
So I'll start this one, if that's okay?
Yep.
Over the last couple of months, I've had a bunch of people reach out to me with a renewed interest in pursuing fiber optic within Hampden. Um, I think we're at the point now where we've had a lot of interest in the committee that I think it's rightfully so that the committee gets officially appointed rather than acting as an ad hoc committee, and there's four of the members here tonight that would like to be appointed, we have nine in total, some of them couldn't make it tonight due to prior commitments, but I would like to entertain them, the board, to be nominated or appointed to the fiber committee as an official committee.
Who was on before that didn't want to?
There was a couple people on that either moved out of town or didn't have the capacity to, to fill it anymore. So I emailed the list of individuals who would like to be appointed, there's nine, like I said, um, you can run through those, or you can ask questions to the gentleman here.
Well, I did miss a call from Dave Hayward, but hopefully it wasn't to remove his name, so.
No, no, Dave couldn't make it tonight, so maybe he couldn't get on Zoom, and I'm guessing maybe that's what it is.
Okay.
So we think about this fiber optic business.
It was a pretty big shame for the residents of the town and the town itself when it didn't pass last year.
So you're in favor, though?
No, no.
Ready to go forward? That's good.
Do you feel we should bring it forward again this year? Or is that something you want to explore?
I think that's a position that the board would have to get together and decide, you know, what the best options were to move forward.
Okay, so this will have to be a committee now, we need to post their meetings, which I think we were before anyhow with the ad hoc time.
Yeah.
Greg, do you think there's a need for any expense, maybe for clerical, that we could cover all the selectman expense?
Um, there might be some need for minute taking, or, you know, some minor clerical stuff, maybe if the, if the board decides going maybe to mailers or anything like that, I'm sure there might be a little bit incurred with it.
Are you looking to step back from it a little bit?
I'm looking to be the liaison to the board.
Okay.
And have the board run itself and organize and kind of game plan and spearhead as a team.
Who was on before Gina was on?
Gina was on, yeah, she's unfortunately not going to be able to continue.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, I guess the question is, you know, who's going to be in charge of it, do they need clerical help? Should we look for somebody in the town hall that could devote a couple hours to help out, or?
I think the first thing to do is to get the board organized, appointed, organized, get a first meeting scheduled, elect a chair, and then see what the needs are for the committee.
Okay, all right, so this list of names here, I mean, it's unfortunate we don't have everybody here, but you've personally spoken to everybody.
I have.
Okay, so we have, I'll make a motion to appoint John Plaster, Vander Leeden, Dave Hayward, Richard Muse, Joe Seletti, Brett Soja?
Soja.
Soja, pardon me.
Good job.
Daigo Otosa?
He couldn't make it tonight either.
Okay, Scott Thomas and Joe Sibilia to the fiber optic committee, study committee?
I would, yeah, maybe rephrase the fiber optic study committee.
Fiber optic study committee, effective immediately for term expiring June 30, 2025.
One year?
One, one year plus, I mean, by then you should have a pretty good sense.
Yeah. I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
Last chance.
All in favor?
So I think the next thing is to either have town administrator, or if I'm the liaison, I can organize the first meeting and coordinate with everybody a good time.
Probably, we probably got to tell Eva too, they all have to reach.
Oh, yeah, you would have to get sworn in by the town clerk at some point during the day when she's here, be a official committee.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Town policy on data and computer management?
I take over on this one, too?
Yeah, go ahead.
So before we jump in, these two things, the next two agenda items, they kind of go hand in hand, the town data, policy, community management, and B E D A R issues. A little bit of backstory on this, I've spent the last couple of weeks kind of digging into some of our IT issues in town, working with Entree a little bit, talking to some of the town hall employees that have been having issues. First thing that came up mount was we found a couple computers on the town's network, network, the domains, and able to get into the servers that were unmanaged from Entree. Meaning, they couldn't update them, they couldn't access them, they had no control over them. We were able to locate one of those devices locally, so we knew what that was, but the other device, we had no clue it belonged to. So I had them remove it just for security reasons. We didn't know what it was. Going through some of those lists, Entree came in, we were reviewing the devices, and while Entree was here, they were working in the assessor's office, and there was another computer issue going on where the assessors, again, couldn't reach Vadar. And that's how this whole data thing started. Burem from Entree looked into it, found out that the local network of computers, which is not tied to the internet, there are three networked computers together that share a separate hard drive. One of the hard drives was in pre-fail state, according to Burem from Entree. Needs to be replaced, the whole hard drive array. I asked him, you know, it's in a RAID system, which is a data backup system. He says it can't be repaired or fixed individually. You take a hard drive out, put a new one in, swap it, it can't be done. It's an old system that was kind of ad hoc together many years ago. It just needs to be replaced. During that conversation with Burem, he was telling me that these three networked computers, since they're not on the internet, they have no ability to manage from Entree, so they have no updates going to them, and the software on there is out of date and unsupported. We're running Microsoft Access 07, and a lot of this stuff requires new software. So it's unsupported now from Microsoft. It's going away. There's going to be any problems, S O L. So it got me thinking a lot about, you know, our IT policies as a town. You know, there's a new bill coming out from the legislature about data security and compliance, and a lot of other towns are adopting data governance policies. So I don't have anything to present. I was kind of looking for the board's direction. Maybe, you know, I can work with the new incoming town administrator on a data governance infrastructure and town hardware policy, you know, how we store the town's data, where it gets stored, and who has access to it. So these things kind of go hand in hand with the infrastructure. We need some updates, we need some maintenance. Some of it's not able to happen, and then other things, new software such as Vadar, we could bring it into the aid where we can use everything cohesively, department to department, to make jobs run more efficiently.
Is it also a bit of a consideration, as you alluded to, where there's one overarching, basically, who's in charge? Like you say, where you have some older systems, and somebody's got to be able to say, look, you need to replace that.
Right.
I know you're comfortable with it, there's a comfort level, but somebody's got to, hate to say it, make the hard choice, and we have to go for it. We pay good money for a consultant.
Right. And I think some of these other towns, through their data governance policy, have a electronic management head, and who's somebody's in charge of all the infrastructure. And, you know, they're able to facilitate, you know, rather than relying on our contractual agreements with Entree, there's somebody that's actually in charge of inventory and data and hardware.
We have a time bomb here with these hard drives. We really do.
The one that Burem was very concerned about, this one hard drive, that the whole unit needed to be replaced. And this is the one right now that they don't manage, so they don't back it up.
And where's that located?
In the clerk's office.
The clerk's office.
Now, does that dovetail into the next item on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. You do see Kelly online. And she'll.
So that failed, failing hard drive that's in pre-fail state, according to Entree, is the one that hosts the local Vadar files. And the ones that, at the time when I was here, I physically saw it, they could not access them from their office because they went, it went down. That is my backstory on that.
And what is on this hard drive, the one that's about to fail? Do we know?
I think, basically, it's about 20 gigs worth of Vadar files.
So it's assessor, collector, treasurer files?
Whatever they all communically, are communatively used together.
Yeah.
In talking to some of the other department heads, they use the cloud service, whereas this one's not in the cloud.
Now, there was talk about being backed up with a thumb drive, et cetera. I think we're almost into a little larger than that can be.
That is also, in goes into my data compliance thing, you know, data governance, you know, that's not the proper way to do a backup.
Right.
And it's unsecured assets.
All right, so are you talking, writing a policy and presenting back to board?
I would like, with the new town administrator on a policy with the board, and obviously suggestions as well.
So while you're working on the new, while you're working on the new policy, what do we do with this?
Well, something obviously needs to happen. I think that's where we, as a board, need to take charge of, you know, the town assets and decide what we need to do with it.
And can Entree fix it?
They can back it up and put it on a new hard drive, but it's in the same state.
It's kicking the can down the road.
Right, I mean, it's the same thing, you know, a data compliance issue.
So I guess, I guess I'm asking, what do we need to do to fix it?
Well, have we already told them to go ahead and fix the hardware?
No, because they, not under that direction, no. Because it's, it's in the clerk's office at the moment.
But still, hardware covered under our overarching contract, right?
But I think the question was here, you know, we were supposed to get quotes.
Right, but even if we said to go to the cloud thing, that computer would still need to be fixed, right?
No.
Well, isn't the hard drive failing?
It's a storage drive. It's a RAID drive.
Oh, it's just secondary?
It's just secondary, and that's where all the data is stored. So it's not a physical computer. Three computers tie into this hard drive, and they share the data off this one hard drive.
Like a Drobo or something like that, basically?
It's, it is a RAID. I know you heard in IT a little bit at work, but it's two laptop drives tethered together in an enclosure.
Like a Drobo?
It's, but it's not a real device. Somebody made it.
Oh.
From what it looks at, and from what Burem was telling me, it was homemade.
All right, so are you looking for, we need to, we kicked this down the road a bit, but I think we're at the point where we try to work together with everybody.
And we were supposed to get quotes, too, about a month or so ago.
I understand, but I don't think we got those, for whatever reason. We've got some information, but not, I did see some information from Kelly, I believe. I didn't see that being a huge increase in cost, looking at what we're talking about for security.
Right.
And I think there needs to be a directive coming from somebody to get this done.
Yes, I agree.
I guess the question is, is the board, is the town administrator as the overseer of operations in the town hall? Or a combination?
I think it's a combination. I think it's the board directing the town administrator to.
Yes. I think that would be the logical sense.
You know, it's the policy of the board to have secure information, it's the policy of the board to have the different departments be able to communicate with each other in a safe manner.
And I think just for clarification, we're not trying to tell hell anybody to do their job. We just want to make sure that the stuff that we're responsible for, you know, security, data, you know, the policies that we are adhering to need to be met.
Good.
So I guess that dovetails into the question, do we want to increase the budget or go forward with that increase in the Vadar system to put it completely on the cloud for all departments to use?
I would say yes.
Yes. So make that motion that we authorize the town use of Vadar to access from the cloud for all departments.
I like, I think I worry, just like you said, about the imminent, if you will. It's not, not a question of, you know, when you need, there are two kinds of types of people, those who back up and those who wish they backed up.
Right.
Right.
You're looking for a timeframe and how quick it could happen.
Exactly.
I believe, while talking through Kelly, and if she's on, she may be able to talk better about it, that it would probably take a few days, within a week, to get it done.
Okay, I think we, I'd like to see the motion to be direct the town administrator to start the implementation of everything being on the Vadar cloud.
I amend the motion to that. So I would amend the motion to that.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? I, okay, so that's town policy, that's the Vadar issue. Municipal aggregation, what do we get there?
That's something I know we talked about putting that on there. I do know that there's some input from, I think somebody said maybe we could maybe invite some comment from Senator Olivera's office.
Senator Olivera is working with some other members of the legislature to streamline the process. Process from the town side is article at the annual town meeting, approval by the town meeting, then it goes to the DPU, which can take up to a year to approve it. And so they're focusing on the DPU and getting them to process, especially with electrical rates where they are in the Commonwealth. They're focusing on getting the DPU to act more quickly on these applications.
Okay, through the chair, can I reach out to Jake and see if he's available next week, maybe, to discuss this?
That's a good idea.
All right.
You want Senator in next?
Yeah, I'll reach out to him. Yeah, let's see if he can come in.
Okay, good. My letter to double poll.
Double spaced, double polls.
Double polls.
It was nice.
There's a little, there's a, one sentence is a little awkward, I got to change it a little bit, but it's.
No, isn't he the double poll guy, too?
Who's that?
Jake?
Yes, Jake's the double poll guy, too.
We can get rid of two polls in one sentence.
Hey, Don doesn't like to get a comment.
So what I would do is, if this was with your approval, I would, I have the email addresses of the people that I dealt with before with the poll on Main Street, and I would send it to them and just tell them, I think we should just put them on notice, they were looking at this, and to be sure, you know.
We're purging here.
Like the ones laying on, laying on the ground all the way down Allen Street there.
There's already a couple of double polls over there right now, did you see them?
Yeah, there are. Did you see how they got them? No, they got them stacked on top of wood blocks. And getting them wired together.
Those new polls, they have laying on the ground, look shorter than the polls in the ground.
That's what I thought.
My mother said, my mother, my wife said that, too.
I know, and you look at this way and this way, I mean, but you look at it.
No, they don't look like they, yeah.
She did. She said, why are they getting new polls? Those are shorter.
If you've got to put them in the ground, you know, at least 10 feet, probably.
Right, yeah.
But they're done, they're bigger.
They grow. Water them a little bit.
They're wood, right? All right, guess what?
I'm in favor of it.
Okay, good, all right. Don, you have some food permits?
Well, you know, there are some food permits.
Did you call him Johnny?
Yeah.
All right.
Two in your folder, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Just a piece of mine.
So the Stout Pigeon Coffee Company.
Stout Pigeon?
Stout Pigeon from Turner's Falls.
Really?
Would like to have a one-day at the starting gate on March 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I like the name.
What are they doing, what are they doing up there? They having some kind of?
There is, there's this thing called Babes for a Cause. I've seen advertisement on Facebook for it, basically, almost like what ERC5 does, Don.
Oh, I see.
Kind of a group thing out there, so. They've had that Feast for the East, things like that.
Babes for a Cause.
I'll go there. So there's a second, second one also on March 23rd. The Erickson Farm from East Lawn Metal on Porter Road needs a one-day permit also for that event at the starting gate.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
All right, we have, do we have a town administrator report?
We do. It's, do you have copies?
Yes.
Okay. I joined the ambulance oversight committee on the 20th. The rebate this year will be $59,000. The committee would like me to ask the selectmen if they would like a recommendation for ambulance services in the new fiscal year. The options would be another one-year extension of the existing contract with Action Ambulance, new three-year contract, and whatever else you might choose to do, do bidding or whatever. But it's time to get started on the contract that's going to be expiring on June 30th. The committee asked Action for pricing for a new one-year extension and for a new three-year contract, and that pricing will be available in two weeks. So I would think you, I don't know if you want to make a decision tonight, but without any information. So anyways, a positive meeting, and a number of the issues that were brought up in earlier meetings under this contract seem to have been resolved. I'm also involved now with the transition, making sure that the new administrator knows all the passwords, for example, and all the accounts that we have, and some of the, we're going to go through my, my email drive to talk about all the various activities that are going on and have gone on. We don't have that set up yet, but I'm hoping that we can do it Wednesday, when the new administrator is going to be here in person to talk to our department heads and staff. I'd like to do it after that. If he, I know he has some issues this coming week. If he can't do that, then I'll, I'll do it when he arrives on Monday, the 11th. Also, I think you have some information from town council regarding the settlement with the 3M and the DuPont Company on PFAS Chemicals. There was, I saw John put out an email, it's about 100 bucks, but then you give up.
You know, you look at the total number and divide it by every.
That's right. Every, all.
You like that opioid number?
Yes.
So we're not funding the water district with this?
No, I don't think so. And also, you'd give up your, the condition is you give up your rights to pursue legal action in the future, so.
You fight in the Hudson, right, Don?
Yeah, yeah. I am a third-generation employee of the DuPont Company, so I won't offer any recommendations. Summer job.
You're no guy.
I was brooming floors and opening packages.
I would have to recuse myself. Worse than that.
Worse than that, oh, okay.
It's not for public knowledge right now.
Yeah. Then meet with the highway superintendent regarding the personnel issue. And again, Ann Goby's weekly meetings, I find very useful, and will encourage the new T A to continue. It's about 20 minutes on Wednesdays or Thursdays, and well worthwhile. So that's the report. Like any reports?
We had a building committee meeting this morning at the police department. Thank you, Scott, for making the room available. So going forward, the committee would like to attend our meeting next week to talk about having a forum for basically the new senior center expansion proposal and to review potential dates and locations with the select board. If we could put that on the agenda. Planning board has a public hearing on this Wednesday. Should be fairly well-attended. I did make note to the board, as we know, our Zoom operator didn't really stay. I did ask Becky if there was anybody else available on the work, catchwork program. Nobody has come forward yet, but she will re-advertise. I would suggest to the board that we put it out there as a paint position. I mean, we're seeing more and more of it.
Yeah.
I think it, you know, Bob's been doing a great job, but, you know, for Brian coming on, having somebody here for that, with Concom may want, I mean, they're going to be pretty busy.
They go.
Planning would be busy. I think having somebody, we can pretty much guarantee one to two sessions a week going forward. I don't think, I think it's a job that's perfectly suited for somebody of our age, if you will, that doesn't have children, commitment at night with homework, et cetera. And with the way it's going nowadays, many more of people our age are used to Zoom. They really are.
Be careful with that people our age. Be careful with that people our age.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you way down here. What? Don, can you pass that? Don, can you pass that?
Where are we?
That'll be, so for Wednesday night, I volunteered to help them with Zoom on Wednesday.
What about like an intern from the school or something like that? Would that be an option?
That happened, I mean, we had that.
We had one. It didn't work too well either because of other school committees.
Burn down, she moved to Southfield while attending Minutawalk. And just going back and forth was.
Is there another person that might be in that?
I think we could reach out, but for right now, the immediate need was Wednesday.
Immediate need, sure, but, you know, just to do the due diligence.
And that might be something Lauren could reach out to, people at the school, as well